Good morning. Today is Tuesday, December 20th. It is 9:01. We will call this meeting to order. We're to ask folks who are with us if you are both willing and able to stand for the invocation delivered by Detective Charlie Davidson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If you could bow your heads with me. Father God, we just come before you this morning and we take time to just give you thanks for everything that you provide to us this day, the air we breathe. God, we pray as we come upon this Christmas time that we can have time to share with friends and loved ones and time to celebrate and time to reminisce. God, but I pray that we also remember during these times that we're not perfect. And God, that we are in need of a Savior. And this Savior was born on Christmas morning. Both 100% man and 100% God, Jesus Christ was born and defeated death so that believing in Him, we can have everlasting life. As it says in John 14:6, "Jesus says, 'I am the way, the truth, and the life.' No one comes to the Father except through Me." I pray that we remember these words. We remember these actions of Jesus Christ during this Christmas time in celebration of the birth of our Savior. God, I pray today that you would impart your godly wisdom on the mayor and the council as they make decisions guiding this city. I pray that you impart your godly wisdom on department directors and staff in this city. Help us to continue to be a heartbeat of what cities need to look like across this nation, here in the center of this nation. I just lift this up to you and pray all this and ask this in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 13th, 2022.
Every member have a chance to review the minutes, and if so, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, then I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Public Agenda, Dr. Brian Pate, Tobacco and Adolescent Decision Making.
All right. If you are here for the Public Agenda for the first time, we welcome you. We ask you to say your name and your address. If you're comfortable saying your address, that's part of the policy. Also, you have five minutes. The timer is in the corner. If you go over the five minutes, we'll let you complete your thought, and I might signal to you something like this. But welcome and thanks for being here.
Thank you. My name is Brian Pate and my address is 8220 East Oxford Circle. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council this morning and share some perspective on this challenging issue of mitigating underage tobacco utilization. I'm representing myself today, and this, my presence here was facilitated through my relationship with the American Heart Association. I'm a board member of the AHA locally, specifically not representing opinions from my employer in Wichita. I'm a board-certified pediatrician. I have been since 1998. I do not have any specific expertise in adolescent medicine or neuroscience. And if I'm expressing any expertise today, it's probably in just the general ability to review and interpret medical literature. I do have almost 30 years of experience treating children in the hospital setting, however. I'm also not here to describe any expectations for policy. That's a more complex matter that is beyond my expertise. But I am here to provide some medical and scientific information that may be of potential value for consideration in the process of policy and/or legal decisions intended to mitigate underage purchase of tobacco products. The science that I'm going to summarize today is, I would say, is incomplete. It's relatively new science, predominantly over the last 20 years that's been developed. I'm going to try to summarize some of the pertinent research regarding the neuroscience that describes how adolescents respond to high-risk situations or the sort of nature part of the nature-nurture complex that we understand that drives maturation and development. This is a complex topic and likely also involves psychology and context, the nurture components, in addition to the neuroscience. Those two other elements aren't as well-developed in the literature, so what I'm going to present to you today is a summary of the basic neuroscience. The science in my review apply to adolescents and young adults, and in the literature, that definition is roughly 10 to 11 years of age, to 18 to 20 years of age, with the peak of the attributes of the neuroscience that I'm going to describe at approximately age 15. So having all that been said, these are some of the points I think may be of value in the consideration of this challenging and difficult topic. Teens understand situations the same as adults, and they don't believe they're invulnerable. They also possess the logical capabilities of adults. So it's important to understand that this isn't about saying that teens don't think the same as adults or aren't capable of understanding the situations. They're just hardwired to process and experience the situations in a different way than adults do. The main reason for this is that the relative imbalance of the maturation of two critical parts of the brain, one of which seeks reward and interprets reward, and one of which has the cognitive control to make sure that that reward-seeking process is safe and reflects cultural norms. Those two things develop at different paces for all of us. And roughly at the time of puberty, there's a huge surge in the development and the functioning of the reward center of the brain. And the equal maturation of the cognitive control part of the brain is a slower process that's more linear. It's not this big explosion that happens during puberty, and that doesn't fully mature probably until the mid-20s, but maybe as late as the early 30s. So this makes teenagers natural risk-takers that prioritize the stimulation of risk over the consequences of the risk. When teens make in-the-moment decisions, they are less likely to rely on a generalized sense of risk or the gist or the gut instinct of risk. This is partly because they haven't experienced risky situations like adults and partly because there's a disconnect between this emotional and cognitive component of the brain, such that they just don't interpret a high-risk situation and avoid it the same way that an adult might. Any decision that involves peers completely exacerbates this situation for teens. And it's important to note that peers don't have to be present. Peers that might be observing or just the teen having the knowledge that what they're doing could be important to their peer group exacerbates their risk-taking behaviors. Negative consequences are less likely to be impactful and mitigating or changing behavior than positive experiences for teens. So carrots work better than sticks, but that's not to say that punishment or sticks do not work.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Dr. Pate? One quick question for you.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
No problem. I appreciate your remark. So in your opinion, not representing anything else, what do you think about penalties for teens and tobacco use? I know you said that you know more carrot, less stick. What would be kind of your suggestion to help out?
So I did search the literature on this specific topic, looking for medical, scientific opinion about the effectiveness of punishment. And there is not good literature there. I would say, based on the information that I understand, number one, we probably shouldn't expect teens to respond to the same circumstances in the situation as an adult. So a teen, based on my understanding of the literature, a teen understands the risk of punishment but doesn't attend to it or pay attention to it in the same way an adult would. It's not to say that the punishment can't be a deterrent, and it's not to say that the teen can't learn from the punishment. But in that moment, as the teen is experiencing that situation of the risk associated with a punishment, they absolutely don't process that the same way as an adult would. It may be that a teen is actually drawn to the situation because of the punishment. That's part of the high-risk nature of the experience, and their brain is, might be balanced in such a way to make that a desirable interaction for the teen, even though there's a negative consequence associated with it. How effective punishment is at mitigating or changing behavior is really something I can't comment on, but they clearly don't interpret the situation the same as an adult would. The literature would suggest that decreasing the opportunity for a teen and changing the social or peer currency associated with the behavior are probably the most effective strategies that we could employ to try to mitigate risk-taking behavior for teens. Thank you.
All right. No further questions. Thank you, Doctor. Madam Clerk.
Melissa Dodge, Inequity of Youth Tobacco Penalties.
Welcome.
Good morning. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you to Dr. Pate for what he shared. My name is Melissa Dodge and my address is 1401 North Wagon Wheel Court in Derby, Kansas. In September of 2021, I received a phone call from my son's school telling me that they had reason to believe that he had a vaping device and wanted my permission to search his locker. I put a lot of trust into my oldest son, and he has earned it. He's a straight-A student and has never been in any kind of trouble. That trust also comes from a place of necessity. Two of his three siblings are special-needs children. They require a lot of my time and energy. One is living with a congenital heart defect along with other complex medical diagnoses, and the other is autistic. I am a full-time, single parent working part-time in the evenings. I am unable to work full-time due to the caregiving required for all of my children. The principal had called me back to tell me they had searched my son's locker and found a vape pin. They told me that he would be expelled immediately. When I arrived at the school, I found my sobbing son surrounded by adults, which included the principal, the school resource officer, and a police officer. Through an interview that was conducted without me, they determined that another child had pressured my son into a trade involving the vaping device, which was then found in his locker. My son had just started his freshman year of high school. He was struggling to find his way back into new routines, socializing, and peer relationships. Being a freshman, the building and most of the students were all new to him. Since he had never been in trouble before, the principal's office was also new to him. The principal explained that the Derby School District has a zero-tolerance policy for tobacco. He missed so much of the high school experience, school dances, and football games. He had no friends before this life-changing episode. When he recently returned after a one-year absence, he walked back into the school even, full of even more stress and uncertainty. His mental health had been compromised. This penalty did not serve my child's social and emotional needs, nor my own. I felt shame as a parent, like I had failed him. Expulsion is a very serious thing, and vaping is too. It's addictive and deadly, but our kids are targets of the commercial tobacco industry. They spend millions of dollars marketing these flavored products. I recently learned about a study paid for by the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas that shows that half of Kansas schools call the police on a first offense of tobacco possession. The study says it is largely because of state and local laws that penalize youth for purchase, use, and possession of these products. Based upon my family's experience, I think it is wrong to punish kids for our society's failure to protect them. That is why I support the tobacco sales fairness and responsibility updates being discussed by the Wichita City Council. Although I am not a Wichita citizen, it is my hope that the elimination of ineffective youth tobacco penalties will set an example for the entire region. It is estimated that $74.2 million was spent on Kansas tobacco advertising last year. Juul just settled a lawsuit in the state of Kansas for targeting kids with predatory advertising. A Wichita vape manufacturer was just one of six in the entire nation, indicted by the Department of Justice for illegal manufacture and sales of vaping products. My kid is just a kid, trying to make his way through adolescent experiences that while always hard are proving to be especially challenging during these times. Please support the updates to the Wichita Tobacco Retail License and eliminate ineffective youth penalties. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Madam Clerk.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 11.
Does every member have a chance to review the consent agenda, and if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Board of Bids and Contracts, dated December 19th, 2022.
Morning. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. The board of bids for December 19th, 2022 are as follows. For engineering, we have the sanitary sewer improvements to serve West Breeze Edition. For Dutton Construction and Plumbing LLC, in the amount of $20,992 negotiated with the engineer's estimate. We have the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control Project Structure Rehab Levy F for Don Linger &amp; Sons Construction Company Incorporated for the amount of $170,000. We have main water treatment plant emergency generators for Foley Equipment Company Incorporated for $1,453,141. For purchasing, we have Wichita Art Museum Stairs renovation for Don Linger &amp; Sons Construction Company Incorporated for $249,750. We have smoke remediation services at Museum of World Treasures for Service Master Clean and Restore for $162,065.70. We have the traffic routers hardware for Converge One Incorporated for $57,095.90. And we have the Advanced Learning Library Audio-Video Visual Equipment for Conference Technologies Incorporated for $136,963.73. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are our current open requests for proposals out on the street. And I would recommend to approve the bid awards as recommended.
All right. Questions for staff? Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. Josh, on slide five, I believe, it was the main water treatment plant emergency generators. Is that for the existing water treatment plant or the new one that's under construction?
I believe it's the existing, but Public Works.
For the existing? Will those be able to be, continue to be used after the new water treatment plant comes online? Or do they get mothballed, or are they for the pumping?
Mayor and Councilmember Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. It's primarily for the pumping, the last part of what you talked about. These generators would stay in place even when the new plant comes online.
Councilmember Booba.
Mayor, can I, can we get more information about the $100,000 smoker mediation over at the World Treasures?
Sure. Specifically.
I guess I didn't know, I didn't know what happened over there.
Oh, okay. Anyone can speak to the smoke remediation services at the Museum of World Treasures?
Councilmember, we'll get a report to you.
Also, let me know if there was insurance on that or anything like that, or if we just paid for that.
Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. Discussions back to the bench. Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Approval of Bond Counsel Contract.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jennifer McGonaghy, City Attorney. The item before you is the selection of the city's bond counsel. This is a contract that, one of the specialized legal services contract that the city has. Bond counsel works primarily with the Departments of Finance, Law, and the City Manager's Office for general obligation bonds, revenue bonds, refunding bonds, temporary notes, industrial revenue bonds. Because bond transactions are very complicated, the issuance and sale of bonds requires specialized legal services by experienced firms. City also works with bond counsel to ensure our compliance with state and federal regulations, which are complex. The city went through the regular procurement process in this matter. The current contract is expiring, and a request for proposals was released in September. Two responses were received, and interviews were conducted in October by the Staff Screening Committee. The Staff Screening Committee, consisting of Finance, City Manager's Office, and Law Representatives, reached a unanimous decision to select the firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell to continue as the city's bond counsel. This firm was founded in 1979 here in Wichita and has eight offices with 52 attorneys in five states at this time. Gilmore &amp; Bell specializes in public finance transactions and handles more complex finance transactions than all other firms in Kansas combined. And has served as the city's bond counsel for the last 10 years. The new contract is nearly identical to the current contract. The term is for one year with the option to renew upon five, four more one-year terms. I need to correct. The agenda report says two years. But the initial term is a one-year with the opportunity to have continuous one-year renewals up through the end of 2027. The basically only change on this agreement from the prior one is a small increase in fees, which is the first fee increase since 2012 with this firm. The fees are based on several categories found on pages two and three of the contract. They are based on the different types of issuances, the size of issuances. For example, general obligation bonds is one category, general obligation temporary notes is another, so forth and so on. And the rates are based on the face value of the bonds. The increases are, for instance, from 75 cents per 1,000 to 85 cents per 1,000 for one category. I won't go through each one of you, each one of those with you, but that's the general fee structure. There's also an hourly fee for certain types of legal advice and services that's provided by the firm. Annual fees that have ranged over the last few years have ranged from $210,000 to $442,000. So other than that, the contract is again pretty much similar to what we've had. I'm available for questions. Representatives of Gilmore Bell are here if you have any further questions for them, and I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
All right. Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Tyler? No. We'll bring discussion back to the bench then. Further discussion on this item? As someone who interacts with a bond counsel about once a week, I just want to say I've enjoyed our interactions and I enjoyed working with you. And if this vote passes, I look forward to working with you in the future. So if there's no further discussion, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contract and authorize all necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their votes. I've received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Engineering permitting software and permit fee increases.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. One of the things that we do in Public Works, it's not always front and center, is protection of the public right-of-way for the intended users and adjacent property owners. And as such, the Engineering Division processes up to 8,000 right-of-way permits each year, and these are for a variety of different uses, including pavement cuts and dirt cuts. I'll talk about some specifics here in just a moment. With over 25 franchise utilities that have the right to work within our rights-of-way, first and foremost, we want to protect public safety within those public right-of-ways and try to create an ability for all to operate collectively and safely, because that's a lot going on. Our right-of-ways continue to get a little bit more crowded. There's a lot of things going on with high-speed internet, with fiber, all those types of things. So through this permitting process, we can work with them again so that all can work together. And ultimately, by city code, it's a And ultimately, by city code, it's adjacent property owners' responsibility to maintain the right-of-way, so we've got to make sure it, it stays safe for them, the areas get restored, uh, a lot of different things that we work with on the permittees throughout the process. So, there's several issues discussed with you today as part of your consideration for this item, including, uh, recommended per- permit fee increases to cover the cost of a new permitting database, selection of a vendor for the same, and a new fee to, uh, for revisit inspections. To show you a few examples of the work that we do, uh, this was some recent work for a major gas line replacement on South Seneca near Pawnee. Considerable impact to traffic, uh, our permitting allows us to, the ability to review plans upfront, including those for traffic impact, working with property owners, uh, whatever it might take to get this work done, especially in the instance like this, is no different than a public project. But there's some additional challenges because it's being done privately. We also provide a single annular, annual contractor to replace the pavement. So, there's a lot of moving parts that we need to keep track of, and we need to recover our costs for the same, again, through that permitting process. Utility repairs we see in the sidewalk often, public safety concerns need to be addressed. We need to be able to track the status of the permits and to get permanent repair, get to the permanent repair in a timely manner. Uh, our current software database was actually developed by one of our staff members who's no longer with us. Uh, it's presented some challenge over the time. Uh, with it being developed internally, we've worked closely with IT. They've done everything they can to help us out. It was used to track permits and process billing statements, but it's become unreliable in recent years, uh, which results in rework for inspectors, loss of engineering and IT staff's time to troubleshoot the program, and interruptions for utilities and contractors requesting a permit. So, on the screen, it doesn't look too bad. It's basically become obsolete, and it's no longer working for us. As part of this item today, staff is recommending procurement of a web-based permitting system that is, that is more reliable and offers user-friendly features, such as applying for, paying for, and tracking permits through mobile devices. The cost of the new permitting system would be offset by proposed permit increase, fee increases, which I will show you in just a moment. Uh, one more thing I wanted to talk about related to this item. I mentioned a revisit fee. Uh, what you see here is a new driveway approach and a new residential development. This is a large part of what we do. Under, uh, city code, permit fees are intended to offset the cost of inspections and the permit process itself, and that's all our goal is, is just cost recovery. So, the current permit charges are, are determined based on, entirely on that, again, cost recovery only. Most contractors do a really good job of only needing an inspection one time. Uh, they know how the process works, they make sure everything's set up and ready to go, but that doesn't always happen. So, we start to see a little more on occasion that we need to go back, uh, to things that are out of our control, that are in the hands of the contractor. We think it's time to add that revisit fee so that we can recover our costs associated with that. Otherwise, uh, those costs are needing to be covered elsewhere. So, staff is recommending the proposed revisit fee to offset staff time and equipment costs due to additional inspections that are not currently covered under our, um, fee structure. The current proposed fee increases are shown here. Effectively, this is five percent recommended increase. Code allows an adjustment of these fees actually every year if desired, based on a three-year running, um, CPI. And so, we don't intend to raise this to meet what inflation has done over the last several years. I think the last time we asked for a increase in the fees was probably eight to ten years ago. So, five percent, we think, is fair at this point. Again, that's going to be primarily used to cover the cost, ongoing cost, annual cost for maintenance of this database. It also includes adding the revisit fee, which is shown as a fifty-dollar fee per permit charge. Overall, total estimated annual revenue increases twenty-eight thousand dollars based on the current numbers. For the new permit database itself, a request proposals, uh, for engineering permit software was issued in May of two thousand and twenty-two. The Staff Screening Selection Committee selected Charisoft as a consultant, the best method criteria, based on experience and qualifications, um, everything that they could do related to customer service fee and overall assessment. The implementation cost of the permit system is just under one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, including initial deployment and licensing fees for the first year. Cash-funded project of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars was established in December of two thousand and twenty-one for this budget. The licensing fee, licensing fees in subsequent years are approximately twenty-three to twenty-seven thousand dollars annually, and will be offset by revenue generated by the proposed fee adjustments, assuming your approval today. With that, staff recommends city council approve the proposed fee increases and the initiation of a revisit fee. Approve the selection of Charisoft as the firm for the new engineering permit software. Approve the contract, authorize the project budget, the ordinance on first, place the forward, ordinance on first reading, and authorize the necessary signatures. Sorry, there was a comma out of place there, and I did not read that right. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Booba.
I see the, a- as you said, the revisit fee is new. What percentage of permits full require a revisit?
You know, I, we looked at that number, and right now, I don't think it exceeds probably twenty percent, but it's starting to add up enough, uh, that it is, it is creating challenges with us as far as being able to truly recover our costs.
Like, how much time is involved with a revisit? I assume over an hour, at least an hour?
Uh, yeah, it depends on where it's at, you know? That, that's one of the challenges. If you get in a new development that's on the fringes, we've got, uh, three primary inspectors. We've got the city split in three sections, north to south, so that no one inspector has to travel too far. Uh, but there's, it, there's a lot of factors involved with that. You know, we had a couple of, of, I know, over the last year where the contractor was just really struggling and was challenged, and we had to go back multiple times. But travel time can be a part of that. Uh, I think you can generally look at, uh, an hour to two that can be added for each one. Sure.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Um, Gary, anytime I hear that we're improving the speed of government is a plus in my mind. And so, this sounds like it's going to be great, especially as relates to, uh, making it easier for contractors and utility companies to do business with us. Have we engaged with those industries to let them know what's happening here, and are they on board with these changes?
Yes, thank you. It just dawned on me right before you asked that question that I had a note that I skipped to mention that, so thank you for bringing me back to that. We did. Uh, I spent time specifically at WABA with the development community. We also sent this information out to all of our contractors, and we received no negative feedback. I think they were, uh, glad to see that we were not increasing the permit fee anymore, again, because I talked about, you know, generally what we would look at with the CPI, but that's not something that we want to do here, is try to match what inflation's been. So, it's been all good feedback. And I think they recognize the value, because right now, uh, when this, uh, database breaks down, it kind of can put a hold on a lot of things, being able, for them to be able to move forward also.
Further questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the proposed fee increases and the initiation of a revisit fee. Approve the selection of Charisoft as the firm for the new engineering permit software. Approve the contract, authorize the project budget, place the ordinance on first to read, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Have received six yay votes, seven yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Wichita area restoration program contract.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's, uh, really my pleasure to present this item to you today. Um, driver's license suspensions are a problem, uh, across Kansas with the number of suspended drivers having doubled since two thousand and seven. Uh, roughly twenty-five percent of suspended drivers are in the greater Wichita area, uh, with us having about nineteen percent of the, the overall population. So, other jurisdictions around the country are seeing this, the similar problems and have created program, programmatic solutions to help address those problems. And so, uh, we put together an informal steering committee of key stakeholders in our community to look at this problem and, uh, see how we could have a programmatic solution to help people in our community, uh, deal with driver's license suspensions. I just wanted to stop a moment on, on, on the committee, because we really had a terrific, uh, group of people representing, um, multiple jurisdictions and multiple departments within our own city. I want to recognize, uh, Aaron Breitenbach and Marilyn Harp, who are with us today. Uh, but also, every one of these people gave up their time and gave their experience and input to, to help us, uh, understand, uh, the problem, understand best practices, and to sculpt a solution. Uh, the steering committee met three times, uh, to, to do those things. Uh, and out of those three meetings, uh, they recommended the creation of the Wichita Restoration Program, or WARP, uh, to be headed by a working director, assisted by a paralegal, and supervised by a legal assistance organization. Uh, the, the program is organized around five lines of effort, and what's, I think, pretty neat about these lines of effort is, um, they're all expandable. And so, um, this contract gives us a start. Uh, one of the things that the, the program is designed to do is to, uh, seek other resources and grow itself. And with that growth can also be growth in scope. Uh, right now, we're talking about driver's license suspensions. Other communities have looked at expungements and other, uh, areas like that. Um, and as the resources expand within the organization, uh, this, this, uh, the lines of effort are designed to allow them to expand into those other areas that are identified as having needs. So, I, I think it's, uh, it's both really exciting specifically for driver's license suspensions, but it's also exciting to see, um, that this, uh, can expand into other areas that have needs. Kansas Legal Services was identified as the only organization that could meet the program's lines of effort, and therefore was designated as a sore, sole-source vendor to operate WARP. Its nonprofit, uh, status allows it to accept donations and receive, uh, grants to provide, uh, services in our community. The contract is for a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, and, uh, that, uh, money is currently, uh, uh, in my, uh, the municipal court contractual's budget. It's been reviewed by law, and, and also, we have the money in the, in the budget. And so, uh, the recommended action is to approve the, uh, contract and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'll stand for your questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in reading the contract, it says, um, three days a week that we will have a representative at the, um, the court. Um, is, is there any particular days that we're relying on there that would make sense to?
We'll be working with, with the person who's hired for that position to develop that schedule so that we're all aware and that it meets the best needs of the court. That's the minimum. Um, obviously, with the lines of effort that are created and the desire to add funds and, and do some of those other things, they need the flexibility to, to not be there every day of the week, but the hope is that they will end up being there every single day, and that we can identify, the judges can identify people in the courtroom who would benefit from these services and say, hey, you know, walk out, walk right around the corner, and you, you need to talk to this person, they're going to help you get your license back, or get you, uh, a roadmap to getting the legal, uh, privilege to drive back. So, the goal is, is all the days, uh, but the minimum is that three days that you identify.
Okay. Um, is there any plan to contact, uh, residents who might currently be eligible for this program?
So, there isn't currently a, a plan to do that, other than, um, I'm going to be working with our communications department, as well as, uh, working on our website, talking with KLS on how to get it out into the community. Uh, so, not specifically targeting individuals who we know are suspended, uh, but, uh, broadcasting that this is an opportunity, here's the number, here's how to contact, here's how to participate, and this is what it can do for you.
Okay. Um, is the news, is this going to be a new steering committee that we're creating? Is, is it separate from the one that's been advising us so far?
No, I think it's going to remain, uh, all the members of that steering committee have, have said, hey, we would love to continue to participate. We'd love to, you know, u- understand how it's going, and, and really, those members are the key participants, uh, and actually will understand the impacts, uh, that, that this program is having on, in the, within their sphere. Um, so, uh, they've all, uh, committed to continue.
Okay. Uh, last question. Is there any way that the public or any other advisory boards can give suggestions to the steering committee on other areas to possibly look at?
I, absolutely. I mean, I think that, and everyone's going to be very much open to understanding, uh, how this can best serve our community.
Okay, I agree. I, I really appreciate you guys working on this. This is going to be a game changer for, uh, quite a few people, to keep them out of, you know, the, the whole, um, criminal process here. So, I appreciate you guys working on this, and, um, I'm interested to see how this goes and, um, how much impact, uh, or say, a public can have.
And we're actually already scheduled for a six-month review and, and our agenda review, so, so you'll hear from us, uh, in about six months.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for everybody kind of coming together and working on this. I know how important it is and how big of a deal it is to the individuals that are dealing with, um, license issues, so I appreciate all the work on it.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I appreciate the steering committee's work on this, but more so, Nathan, I appreciate your work on this and, uh, and working with Robert Moody and hearing about, you know, all the, uh, studying, all the, um, pulling people together, and how much impact this will make. And I'm excited about this because we have so many people that spiral just off of a simple ticket, and they have so many fines, and then, because we want people to be responsible, they want to go to work, but then if they drive to work, there's a problem there to try to pay all this. So, I'm, I'm really excited about the impact this could have, and I appreciate your work and leadership on this. Um, if the council does pass this, I'd love to see this come to dab so we can continue to spread the word and everybody know about it.
That was well said, uh, to the point where I am going to allow you to continue to hold the floor for a potential mo- motion. I can't top that, Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a move that the city council approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. Have received seven yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Two thousand and twenty-three salary and classification ordinances.
Good morning. Mayor, good morning, council. I am Pam Pennington, Assistant Director of Human Resources, and I am here today to, um, bring this item to you for consideration, uh, to, um, approve the, uh, classification and salary ordinances for two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, our classification ordinance do establish the city's job classifications and corresponding pay ranges for both exempt and non-exempt positions. And, um, we basically have two ordinances, one for exempt and one for non-exempt. For most of our pay ranges, the rates are already negotiated in uni- union agreements, which have already been approved, and they are reflected in the salary ordinance. We have a list of the, uh, individual adjustments per contract or, uh, range of classifications. So, the general pay adjustment for SEIU will be one point five. General pay adjustment for Employees Council will be four percent. Teamsters Transit will be four percent. Teamsters Airport is six percent. And the IAFF Local one thirty-five is nine percent, with most employees being eligible for two and a half percent merit, um, that will be performance-based in two thousand and twenty-three. So, it is recommended that city council place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
All right, questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to action to place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I have received 78 votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor. City council members, rural agents, Department of Finance. Today's item before you, 2023 Insurance Program. Finance staff are responsible for protecting city assets by identifying and mitigating risks. Obtaining insurance is one of the tools used. City Code authorizes a purchasing manager to negotiate this purchase, subject to the ratification of the City Council. During the year, staff cooperates with regularly and communicates with departments regarding insurable interests and coverage needs. The city contracts with insurance broker who works closely with staff to identify potential insurance carriers and negotiate rates, and advise on terms most beneficial to the city. This process starts in early September, and this year has been busy. For 2023, most policies will remain unchanged, except for fluctuations in premiums or self-insured retention levels. All these are listed in the, in the agenda report for review. As experienced last year, carrier losses continue to increase general liability rates, forcing many entities, such as ours, to modify their insurance programs. Also, an extremely hard property market has made it difficult to access comparable coverage and more favorable rates as in past years. Looking at excess general liability, I believe the City Council familiar with this program. The city will continue to maintain a $2 million self-insured retention level, but coverage limits will drop from 20 million, as in the past, to 10 million. Safety National will provide the first 5 million in coverage over the retention. An additional layer of 5 million will be provided by KinSALE for law enforcement liability and APR for general liability. As indicated, last year's additional layer of 10 million over the primary 10 will not be renewed. That level is formerly purchased through AIG. With the deletion of that extra level, combined premiums for 2023 will total 586,102, a 33% savings from the prior year. Examples of what would be covered with excess liability include claims from federal court, suits involving hiring practices, discrimination claims, harassment, and inadequate training, just to name a few. There are more. Looking at property insurance, the city ensures over $1 billion in property assets and maintains a $350 million loss limit. This limit is spread in layers through several insurance carriers. Natural disasters have greatly impacted the insurance industry. This year alone, Hurricane Ian is expected to cost the private insurance industry over $60 billion. These losses, through no fault of the city, have caused carriers to pass along their costs to their customers in the form of increased deductibles, increased premiums, and limits on coverage. Of the 18 carriers approached to provide quotes, 16 declined because the market is that hard right now. Travelers quoted the city with the best rate and coverage package, providing a primary property layer of $50 million. A consortium of six other carriers will provide the other layers to the $350 million loss limit. Combined premiums for 2023 will total over $2.3 million, a 129% increase this year. By moving to travelers, certain deductibles will change. Wind-hail deductibles will increase from the current 2% total insured value to 3% total insured value per location. The most other deductibles will remain at the $250,000 limit. One or two water treatment facilities will be redlined with a $1 million deductible due to specialized equipment involved. Another major change is that vehicles will no longer be covered should they be subject to hail, fire, or other listed perils in the policy. Dovetailing into that conversation is one of risk management's jobs, is to assist departments with deductibles for property loss claims. If faced with future losses, there will likely exist a need for increased funding to address these expenses. A transfer of $1 million from the general fund to the self-insurance fund is recommended to cover any potential increased out-of-pocket costs arising out of such claims. If this transfer is not utilized in 2023, it will remain in the fund to pay for future With that, staff recommends that the City Council receive, file, and ratify the 2023 Insurance Program, authorize staff to make minor modifications or additions as necessary, and approve the transfer. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none? We'll bring discussion back to the bench for the discussion on this item. If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive, file, and ratify the 2023 Insurance Program and authorize the staff to make any necessary minor modifications of coverage details. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Received.
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
I, I think the motion, you're missing a part that we asked to approve the transfer of funds, correct? That was on the...
Perhaps.
Agenda report.
Did they change the motion with the newest? I amend my motion to approve the transfer of funds. Is the second sustained?
Yes, that is correct.
Second.
Very good. So that motion was amended to add the approval of the transfer of funds. With that, we received 78 votes to zero no votes. That means that motion does pass. Thank you to my colleague, Councilmember Fry.
All good.
Madam Clerk, is this why?
Wichita.gov website replacement.
Welcome.
Welcome. Yeah, good morning, Mayor. Members of City Council, I'm bringing to you Tyler Schuflein with City Communications, bringing you Wichita.gov redevelopment. As you know, our website can be the face of our organization to residents and potential employers. Sometimes that's the first impression they get of our city. And we want to make sure we have a first-class website that meets the needs of all of our residents. I don't think it's any secret that our website is currently outdated, and it's not meeting the growing online communication and functionality needs of our residents. If any of you've been on there and tried to search for something, our search function is less than optimal. And the site navigation, for most people, if you're not a city employee, it can be very hard to find some of the stuff on our site, and it can be radically improved. And that leads to confusion for users and difficult to find the information they need quickly. The homepage is cluttered, and it's not optimized for best user experience. And if you've looked at the site, we have an inconsistent look and feel. You go to the finance page, economic development page, you have a much more refreshed look, up-to-date. Some of the other pages, not so much. So we want to make sure we have a consistent look and brand across all of our sites. And part of the reason, you know, there's no one person, one department fault for the way the website is today. Over the years, we've had no clear administrative design or content responsibilities. People just ask the IT department to make updates or, you know, change a page, and nobody has had the authority to say, okay, no, that doesn't meet our brand, or something like that. So I will address the roles and responsibilities a little bit later. A little bit of timeline here. The council directed staff back in August of 2021 to rebuild or redevelop our website. And from then, and from August to December, we put together a team, three different teams of members from each department, almost every department in the organization, to gather research and search best practices and find different ideas of sites that we would like to replicate and what we want to do with our site going forward. Those teams also broke down. We had a, one team that was in charge of creating a survey for city staff to get their feedback on the website, and then one team created a survey for users to get their feedback on the site. And the third team was our technical team that came up with different requirements that we needed for the site. And then from January to February, we reviewed that feedback and researched peer city examples. So on the resident survey, the search function with over 40, about 40% was the number-one thing that they would change on the site, and we, we pretty much knew that coming in. The way that it was configured, making things easy to find, was a close second, and the general appearance didn't rank quite as high. So people want to get there, do their business, and get exactly what they need. Employee survey seemed to match the, the resident survey there, search function being number one again in that, that category. So a few examples that we were looking at that staff really liked. One here is Civic Plus. They're going to be the company I'm recommending later. Here's a site they have with Daytona. It's a very clean site. Search function, front and center, so people can get on there and get exactly what they need. They just type it in. And then you'll notice they have highlighted little circle icons there that have hot topics or some of the most frequently used tabs or pages. We can change those out as we get the data and make sure that whatever our most popular sites are, we can put that front and center so people are getting exactly what they need as quick as they can. The goal of all of this is to get people where they want to be within two clicks. Another site we really liked was Denver. Again, the search is front and center. It's a very clean look. You have your top services there. And then down at the bottom right, on that picture there, there's a What's Near Me feature, and you can type in your address and see different facilities, different events going on that's near you. So we like that feature as well. Same with Fort Worth. Search function, front and center, very clean. You can move the tabs around or switch out tabs to meet the demand. And again, they also had the What's Near Me feature. So a little bit more, we are only redeveloping Wichita.gov, not the city's portal, and not some of our exterior sites like the library, transit, and that sort of thing. As we were looking into this, we want to merge functionality where possible, and Access Wichita is one of those that we would like to merge into our website, and we'll talk more on that in just a second. We want the site to be user-focused and have the best user experience possible. I mentioned they want to be two clicks away from anything, and we want to make sure all their transactional functions are very easy to navigate. And of course, the improved search is going to be a, a big one. And then we want people to be able to report their issues or get information. Access Wichita, that was initially created because of issues we had with Wichita.gov. They knew the search function wasn't good and trying to get key information, so Access Wichita was created. And it, it creates a little bit of confusion for users because they have to exit Wichita.gov to go to another site to report an issue or to get different information. So we want to, again, bring that back into Wichita.gov. So a little bit more timeline here. From March to May, the CMO and IT reviewed the, and interviewed best-in-class providers and compared peer cities and got more ideas of what we wanted to do. And then with IT, we also collaborated and drafted an RFP in the middle of the year. And then from August, or July to August, the RFP was live, and then the Staff Screening Selection Committee met to review those proposals. That committee consisted of communications, IT, project management, law, finance, parking rec, and the call center and WPD. We went out for this team and tried to get some departments that their sites were the most used on the page, and we wanted to, you know, go where users are using those pages and get feedback from those departments on this process. And there were four proposals submitted between Civic Plus, Granicus, Jesse James Creative, and 3DI Engage. I will note that Civic Plus and Granicus are two national firms that specialize in municipal websites. On October 5th, the Staff Screening Selection Committee interviewed Civic Plus and Granicus, and Civic Plus was selected as a preferred vendor. And then from October until about last week, we were doing contract negotiations, and then we're presenting here today. Civic Plus, they have over 200 and, or 2,400 local government clients, and Civic Engage is part of the product that we're going to be getting. It's a content management system where that's going to be the website, the backbone to our website. We are also getting C Click Fix. This is going to be our replacement to Access Wichita, where people are going to be able to report issues, and there even comes an app with that. I think Civic Plus is on the call right now, and they can show a little bit of that here in just a moment. And this is a software-as-a-service, so this will not be a hardware or software we do in-house. This is going to be through Civic Plus, but we will still own all of the data on that site. So moving forward, we're looking at 18 to 32 weeks for completion. We're going to start by working with different departments and Civic Plus to determine content organization layout and design. Again, I said this is what Civic Plus does. They are very good. They know municipal websites, and so they're going to work with us and determine what content needs to go where and what's going to lead to the best user experience. And then Civic Plus and city staff are going to work to build the site. And once we get the site built, we're going to do staff and user testing before we launch the site. And then we're projecting a site launch in the third quarter of 2023, and that includes, we're going to do marketing and communication outreach and do video demonstrations where needed to help users understand the new site and make the transition as seamless as possible. So some of the new features on the site, we're looking as, before I get to that, we're going to have clear roles and responsibilities for content creators. So we're going to bring some of those, make it well-understood across the organization that there's only certain things you can update, and there's approvals that need to be in place so we can maximize the site, search, and brand optimization as we move forward. The search function is going to be improved greatly. I think that'll probably be the biggest thing users notice, is that Civic Plus will make sure when they turn this over to us, that it'll be optimized for search and make it easy to find things. We'll also have a new calendar function that can be edited, so people, if they want to see meetings, they can just see what meetings there are. If they want to see events, they can do that. We're going to have a chatbot, and then I mentioned C Click Fix. And the design with this is mobile-friendly, so no matter if you're looking at it on a computer, or if you're looking on a mobile device, the site will adjust to meet and look the best performance. We're going to have a uniform look, so we're going to have templates, different sets of templates, that is going to create a consistent look across the entire organization so they can feel like they're in the same organization as they go from page to page. We're going to have online forms and a searchable map with different city facilities. And then we're also going to make sure we're doing social integration, that our website's talking to our social channels. And then another piece we're going to get is this is going to be fully ADA compliant. We have gotten this thing called AudioEye that's going to constantly scan our website and make sure we have no ADA issues, and it will automatically fix what it can. And if it can't fix it for us, we are going, it'll alert us, and we'll be able to fix those issues to make sure we remain ADA compliant. And then we're also going to have the customer relationship management customer alerts on there as well. So at this point, I'm going to take a break, and I've got Craig and his team from Civic Plus on the call, and they're going to show you a little bit about what the site does. So Craig, I'll turn it over to you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Tyler. Can you see my screen okay?
Yep.
So Tyler really touched on it, and I want to thank Tyler and Josh. We spend, this is one of the more thorough processes in terms of evaluating websites that I've, I've ever been a part of. But he mentioned, I think it's important, the two-click methodology. So this is what we do. We're going to sit down with every department head that has content represented on the site and really take a deep dive in what are folks looking for when they, they go to find that content? What's their target audience? And how can we get them there in as minimal clicks as possible? Tyler asked me to focus on a few specific features. He touched on ADA compliance, so when, when we move that content over, we scrub every, all your current content. We make sure everything is ADA compliant when we move it to the website. And then on the back end of that website, there's a checker. So you can, when your staff posts new content, they can run a quick scan, and if there's any issues, it's going to let them know what they are and how to fix them. And as a extra layer of protection, we have a partnership with a company called AudioEye. And what AudioEye does is it provides ongoing remediation. So if someone may be slipped up and didn't fix one of those ADA issues, the AI is going to detect that and fix it. And of course, AI is not always perfect, but they actually have folks on a periodic basis go in and audit your site as well, and, and they'll make those recommendations. And they also certify your site and offer legal support services if there were to be any litigation. I wanted to hop back in here to Durham. Tyler touched on the, the search engine functionality. So as we type in the search, they have our predictive search feature turned on. That's going to show the most popular searches for those terms. But when you dive in, it only searches through your website content, and it also allows citizens to drill down further. If they want to search keywords, phrases, or they can even get more granular, like content types. So do they want to search through forms, documents, the calendar? We also have a unique integration with the current code and ordinance, software, MuniCode. So if folks want to search through just those code and ordinances as well, they can do that. Wanted to hop over to the calendar here. Durham has it displayed where it's broken down by community events, public meetings, or business events. But when you dive into that calendar, if you click in there, it allows citizens to sort and filter. So you can have as many calendars as you want. Each department can have their own. You can have a event calendar. You can have a event calendar, those all can feed into the main calendar. But it also allows citizens to search by start date, end dates, keywords and phrases. And what's really powerful, and you'll see this throughout our site, is this Notify Me module. That allows citizens to sign up for information relevant to them. So rather than having to go into the website on a periodic basis to see what's new, if there's information important to them, it actually allows them to sign up for text or email alerts. So for example, if a calendar event changes, maybe Parks and Rec changes a Little League game, they can actually sign up and receive a text or email alert when that information on the website's changed. And that's easily done through a click of a button when your staff updates content on the backend of the website. As Tyler mentioned, everything's going to be mobile responsive, so it's going to look good on a mobile device. That includes form and, forms and all the other modules included. Touching on digital forms, so we do have a forms module built in to the website. They're easy, they're drag and drop, I'll click into a form here. They can be long answer, you can have dropdowns, but very easy to build. And the forms do offer encryption as well. So if you need to take personal information, handle payments, you can easily do that through the forms. He touched on the chatbot. So here we do have a chatbot. We had a lot of customers the last four or five years really asking for a chatbot. We did some research and most preferred an AI chatbot so they don't have to staff someone to answer those questions. So where our chatbots powerful, you'll see here, it pulls in, kind of makes recommendations on the top searched items. So you can drill down and really pull some cool analytics. It does offer language translation. And I know Tyler mentioned a few other departments, like for example, the library being on separate sites. That's where this is real powerful over the search engine because this doesn't only crawl the city site, but it's going to crawl those other websites as well. So if someone may be searching for something on the city site and needs to direct them to the library, this is going to find that information for them. And it constantly gets smarter. So if citizens didn't find what they're looking for, there's a thumbs up or thumbs down, they hit it and that alerts your staff so you can continue to hone in and make the chatbot smarter. And the chatbot also has a unique integration with our 311 solution, See Click Fix. And I am going to turn it over to my colleague Taylor right now, and he's going to touch on that.
Yeah, and for the sake of time, I'm going to kick it off to our Solutions Engineer, Kyra Fairley. She is going to walk through what a request looks like from both the citizen perspective and what it looks like on a mobile device as well.
Okay, so I wanted to just jump right into the mobile app. So just keeping in mind that from the website, there will actually be a link. So one of those buttons that Tyler had mentioned that would direct your residents right to the See Click Fix portal. But I also wanted to make sure that I had time to actually show you. Once they have downloaded the app, so you'll be able to have your branded Wichita app. Just a quick example in Portland here. So this is going to be that home screen which they will be able to quickly access, you know, your website, ask questions, find contact information. This will actually link all of your departments together too. So, you know, any activities or alerts as well, if they want to sign up for those, can be done from the mobile app. A couple other things, so of course, they will actually be able to report any concerns. Now with the mobile app and then also from the web portal, they'll be able to use their cell phones to actually take pictures. So, you know, I can take a quick photo, upload a recent one, or I don't have to include one. Just going to take a quick one really quickly. And then here, this is where they would actually be able to drop a pin to pull in their location. Couple other things, so as far as the mapping is concerned, so we make sure that we are within your service areas, of course. If they're outside of any of the reporting locations, and the system would let them know that as well. Couple other things, so if they wanted to manually type in the address, that is possible too. Now quickly, being able to select from the categories. So just keeping in mind that all departments are able to use this system. So from Public Works, Utilities, Code Enforcement, and then we do have Securities in place. So if we can make, you know, internal categories, private categories, and of course, they are searchable. So let's say that I'm going in and I want to submit a pothole. So in this instance, I will be able to add a description if I wanted to. We offer the ability to have secondary questions, so internally, they'll know, you know, is this in a travel way or not, for example? And then from here, I can go ahead and submit this request. Just also keeping in mind, so we have the ability for them to have registered accounts so that they can receive those notifications and those communications from your internal staff. And then, since this is a live environment, I'm not going to submit. But I wanted to also show you another view here of the requests that have already been made. So we can quickly see the statuses. Those requests can also be listed out where you can see the details. And then the city would also be able to provide updates using the mobile app as well. Now I did want to see, just Taylor, if we wanted to switch over into the web portal or I can continue on with the mobile app.
And Tyler, what are your thoughts for the sake of time?
I think just the app will be fine for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the last thing that I also wanted to mention, so once again, being logged in, I'd be able to see the status as the resident and even internally. But then I also wanted to let you know that any notices or announcements that you also wanted to provide to your constituents or the residents can be pushed out on the mobile app. So, you know, if there's any road closures, community events, or programs available, for example, that you want to notify your residents, then that's something that could be, again, accomplished on the See Click Fix app. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and pass it back to Craig or Tyler at this time, unless you all had any questions for me.
I think Tyler let me know if there's anything else we'd like to cover or counsel, happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you Craig, stick around for just a little bit, they might have a few questions here when we wrap up the presentation. Looks like we do have a few questions. Are you ready for questions at this point? I got just a few more slides and then we can get into questions. So as I mentioned, moving forward, we're going to, CMO Communications is going to manage the content of wichita.gov. We've never had a true owner of who is in charge of all the content and making sure everything stays up to date. So we're bringing that in-house. And then we're going to provide guidelines and guardrails on the administrative side to make sure people can schedule content, it can expire at a certain time so we don't have to go back and delete it. It can just come down on its own. Or that gives it, we have to approve content before it goes live to make sure it's meeting all the ADA requirements, it's optimized for search function, that sort of thing. And then we're going to monitor the feedback on wichita.gov. And we're going to have a little button at the bottom that says you can email us or submit your comments. So if something's not working right for residents, we want to know that. And we want to be able to adjust accordingly. And we'll monitor the data, what sites are, or what pages are being visited the most often. And then maybe we can optimize that on the homepage as well. And then we're going to continue to look for ways to enhance our website and our online presence. If there's other sites that we can pull in and it makes sense or other features that Civic Plus offers, we're going to continue to monitor that going forward and build out the betle. So the first year cost of this can be a little over 184,000. That includes the build of the site, Civic Plus, they're going to be doing a lot of the work for us, building the actual site. Year two and on, it's almost 129,000. And then years three and on, it's subject to a 3% annual increase. So the recommended action is to approve the recommended contract with Civic Plus and authorize the necessary signatures. I would like to thank all the staff that's been a part of this committee, starting a year and a half ago. A lot of work has gone into this. And I think the Screening Selection Committee and Civic Plus have been great to work with. So Tom Bush with IT is here to help answer questions. I can stand for questions and Civic Plus is here as well.
Well, we do have four people on for questions, but before we get to them, can you just tell me a little bit about the app feature? It seems like if we move forward, we'll have the ability like Portland to have folks be able to report issues directly to us, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Just moving, I mean, that's an incredible feature. But also one of the features that I think people have been asking for when it comes to mobile apps, is there a ability to integrate public transit schedules or notifications about public transportation? Would that be something at this website and the app can take on as well?
I'm going to have to turn that over to Craig and his team, I'm not 100% sure on that answer, Craig?
Yeah, so if I can dive a little further, what type of notifications would you be looking to send? Just like schedules, timing, things like that?
Well, schedules and time, of course, but we have folks who have reached out who use public transportation due to a disability. And we'll talk about if a, if a bus is late or if something changes in the route. Sometimes the signs put up, but they don't, their device, they don't have a way to get notified to their device that's ADA compliant. So I was just wondering if the technological abilities could also address issues like that that I've heard.
Yep, so the 311 solution they just dove into does have that ability. And I mentioned when I was in the calendar, there's a Notify Me module. And one of our modules is called Alert Center. There's a few others you could potentially use, but you could actually have that broken down and have specific transit alerts, for example. And it can even be, you know, based on location, whatnot. It can get very granular and citizens can sign up to receive alerts anytime something's updated.
I will say, adding to that, Wichita Transit does have an app right now through the MyStop mobile app that does those features. And I think moving forward, that would be one of those things to look and see if we could combine it into one app. So it's one place for everybody to go.
Okay, thank you. We have four people on the board at the moment for questions, we'll start off with Vice Mayor Todd.
Thank you, thank you Tyler, you did a great job, great presentation. You answered most of my questions, so just want to thank you. I also want to thank all staff who've been involved in this. We've heard comments from the bench that people are not satisfied. I actually received two emails from folks in the community who said, "Thank you for doing this," which is great. So obviously, there's a need. I was going to ask about when it's going to launch and you said it'll be the third quarter. I wish it was a little sooner, but I understand it's a big project. I wondered too, along the way, and I'm very low-tech, I should be the person to test it because if I can figure it out, anyone can. But I wondered along the way of developing it, will there be opportunities to make sure that we're kind of getting it right so that it, we don't put it out there and then we hear from the community, "No, this still isn't addressing our questions."
Yeah, and Craig, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think we can develop the first few pages or kind of get an initial layout of the site before we build all of the pages and make sure we're on the right track.
Okay.
And then as far as the timeline, I agree, we would love to be, I'd like to be done with it now. But we made the decision upfront, we're going to, if we're going to do this, we're going to do it right and make sure we get the best possible solution for residents.
Great, thank you. And then I just had a question about the budget. And again, I'm very low-tech and this is not my area of expertise, but it's 184,000 for year one and then 128,000 for year two. Is that, is year two also for changes and updates and modifications and as well as just maintenance?
Yeah, that's their support, that's the actual paying for the service or for the platform.
Okay.
And then they're going to be there to give us updates and give us recommendations into the future as well, so we're paying for that service.
Okay, and then we can negotiate for the future. And then just kind of one suggestion, if you will, from a novice. But one thing that I do hear, the number one thing I hear from our community members, our colleagues, is that the search function is really challenging and I find it to be as well. The other thing is just to make sure when we're doing it, we try and use really common language. Our website probably has more acronyms than anyone could ever understand. And so that's one thing that I hear too, is that people just don't know how to navigate because they don't know what are our terms and our words used. So if I could throw that in, but mostly just want to say thank you. Thank you for all your work on this and I can't wait to see the new website.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks Mayor, this question's probably for Craig, but will there be any buttons that can shift the language on the site to the language that someone else can read, whether it's Spanish or Vietnamese, something like that?
Yep, so we use Google Translate, so they'll certainly be able to do that.
Okay, and then I guess for Bob, it's pretty exciting to be able to send out messages. How will this work with your plan on how we could out boil advisories and all that? Will we send that text and this app or?
Well, we were actually going to announce that a little later, but if you want, we can talk about that right now. Tyler?
So we were about to announce a water boil or?
No, I'll let you do that this afternoon. By the way, I want to thank Tyler, not just for all the work he did on this, but what he's about to describe in terms of getting notice out on utility, on water boil notices.
So we're going to be rolling out a system, or we've tested the system and we're ready to roll it out. We're going to announce it the first of the year. We have a system in place, it's just for water boil advisories. So it will send an email first and then a text message and then a voicemail. We designed it like that because emails are free. And if the person gets it and they confirm on their email, it will not send them any more messages. And then if they get the text message confirmed there, they won't get the voicemail and then they'll get the voicemail. So if we click of a button, we can do all that. And I think it's once a month, we're going to upload contacts from all the water customers into this system. And so we can make sure it's up to date as possible and then send all those out. So yeah, look forward to that announcement here in a couple of weeks. And then that's one of those things with Civic Plus that we can look maybe in the future to integrate with their system and Civic Ready. We had to move rather quickly on that one to get it out in place because we didn't have something. So that could be one of those opportunities in the future where we combine systems and it's all in one place, so.
So speaking of combining, oh, Councilmember, did you have a follow-up? Speaking of combining systems, we've talked before about possibly having a feature where we could Parks and Records send out, let's say, a benefit to everyone under the age of 17 during the summer where they get free bus rides and access to our swimming pools and so on. Or even having plugins with our library where folks might be able to use an app to, as their library card. I don't know which side, because I know the library has their own infrastructure as well that would come from. But is there abilities to build upon this as well where we can actually have more direct benefits to particular populations of our citizenry? Or is it more where it's just a way to gather the same information that's available on our website?
So you're wanting to know how we are going to communicate and bringing all those communication tools together, is that?
To an extent, and can we, not just communication, but could it be more of the moment where you can shoot out a notification to everyone under the age of 21 and talk about our high school benefits for students? Or shoot out a link to anyone who's interested or a message when we have the new Evolve catalog comes out that has, you know, all the different stuff for, that the city offers as far as activities? Is there ability to use this as the vehicle to get out other information that we frankly have been, I think a lot of times, using social media for?
Yeah, this system can do that and a lot of it comes back to the information that we're going to collect. So saying anyone under 21, that may be a little bit hard, I don't know where we're going to get that information, what their age is. But we can target to a certain extent for certain things that they have signed up for. And that's one of those efficiencies I spoke to earlier was, there's a lot of different systems, a lot of different departments are using. So we're going to take a look at those and find out where can we merge those things and what, you know, is specific to, let's say, Park and Rec and their system for signing up for classes. You know, is there ways, parts of that we can roll into this system? Or does it have to be specifically to the system that they're using for that?
So yeah. So those discussions are ongoing about how to centralize the information and what more we could be doing to expand a more, I guess, unique experience for the user. But this sounds like the first step towards that, so. Councilmember Hoizel?
Thank you Mayor, thank you for the presentation Tyler. Little, little more, a little hotter under the lights up there than it is sitting in the back, I assume?
I like the dark room a lot better.
I can imagine. Well, I appreciate everything you're doing here. The Vice Mayor alluded to it a little earlier about having users. We have some people that are, this is a constant critique of our IT website or our city website. Are they going to be given a chance to test it out before we go live with it? Is there going to be any, any people from the public that we can allow to?
Yeah, we're going to bring people in and do user testing and make sure people can understand it before we roll it out.
Okay, and reach out specifically to a couple of our frequent flyers, maybe?
Yeah, I think we can talk about who those are, but I think I have a pretty good idea. We'll reach out to them and make sure.
Okay, I appreciate that because they have a point, you know, with some of the difficulties with the website.
I will know, because we know government, we know what's going on. So we want to make sure the people who don't live this every day can find what they need easily, so.
Right, I appreciate that. Are we going to experience any cost savings from IT?
I don't believe there's going to be cost savings. I know some of the duties that some of the staff are doing now, it's going to free them up to be able to take on some of the other things they are doing. Because the website's just a part of their job, so with communications taking that over, IT will be freed up to be doing other things as well.
Okay, and also, the last thing I have is, do we have any plans of, you know, putting QR codes around perhaps at parks or places like that? That people can download this app, that way it's advertised as opposed to, you know, just going through social media or, you know, the news sites?
We hadn't thought of the QR codes, but that's a great idea, so that's something we'll look into as we move forward.
Okay, well, I appreciate it, thank you.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, appreciate the presentation, Tyler. And I know this is a daunting task. As someone who has built and maintained websites in my previous careers, it's a challenge. And the demand from our neighbors is only increasing. They want more transparency, they want more accessibility. And so I'm hearing a lot of great things here. I'm pleased to hear that the Communications Department is going to take the lead on this and help oversight it. For seven years, we've had an internally developed site that has met basic needs, but taking it to this next level is certainly appreciated. I'm hoping that we're going to continue to see more transparency, more data, legal notices, things like that that are not currently available on the site to really help with that for our neighbors. And then also cleaning up the reporting function. We've been through Access Wichita, Wichita Report, if you remember that one, that one's a ways back. So having the see, click, fix option is very exciting from a user-friendly ability standpoint. I know there's been a couple of questions about the budget. And just to be clear, we have not paid for any outside service before. This is a new contract and we will have this contract going forward as long as we continue to use Civics Plus.
Yes.
So year two is 128 and then year three is plus 3%. And we'll continue to have that fee as long as we stay engaged with Civic Plus.
That's correct.
Okay, that's fine, it's worth it. Thank you.
Further questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench for the discussion on this item. All right, well, there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contract with Civic Plus and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle, clerk will open a roll. I've received 78 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
CON 2022-59 and CUP 2022-49, zone change requests in the city from LC Limited Commercial to OW Office Warehouse with CUP 22-49 to amend CUP DP-37 on property generally located north of West Kellogg within one half mile west of South Eisenhower Parkway between South Woodchuck Lane and South Holland Lane.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good morning, JR Cox, Planning Department. For a brief overview, this item is being presented today because a protest has been submitted against the application. Some information about the property. The property is generally located north of Kellogg, west of Ridge Road. Property is currently zoned LC Limited Commercial is contained in a community unit plan. And the south half of the property is currently undeveloped. Some information about the request. The application is for the following: a rezoning from LC Limited Commercial to OW Office Warehouse and a community unit plan amendment. The community unit plan amendments are generally to modify the size of the zoning parcels and to allow office warehouse as a permitted use under the CUP. The applicant has indicated that the property has been vacant for 50 years. They feel the office warehouse district fits the property better than the current classification. And they intend to market it for trade such as electrical contractors, plumbers and such. To give some context, properties to the north are zoned LC Limited Commercial District and SF5 Single Family District. The LC's owned parcel is within CUP DP37 and is developed with commercial office space. The SF5's owned parcel is developed with an elementary school. Adjacent to the school north of the CUP DP37 is a retail store zoned LC Limited Commercial District. Property to the south is zoned LC Limited Commercial District, is also within CUP DP37 and developed with multifamily residential dwellings. Properties to the east are zoned LC Limited Commercial District, are within CUP DP37 and developed with office uses. And properties to the west are zoned TF3, two-family residential district and are within the CUP, developed with duplexes. In terms of review, on November 17th, 2022, the Metropolitan Planning Commission approved the application by vote 13-0. Two members of the public did speak at this public hearing with concerns about a rising crime and drainage issues as potential results of the development. During the rebuttal, the agent for the applicant addressed those concerns. On November 7th, 2022, District Advisory Board Four reviewed the request and recommended approval, 10-0. No members of the public spoke in opposition at this public hearing. One valid protest petition has been received, comprises 0.73% of the area, of the protest area. The item can therefore be approved by a simple majority vote, four of seven. As to council action, it is recommended that City Council adopt the findings of the MAPC, Metropolitan Planning Commission, and approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on second reading. This will require, again, four of seven votes. There are alternatives. One, council can override the MAPC, adopt alternate findings and deny the zone change. That will require five of seven votes. Or return the case to MAPC for additional consideration, which would require just four of seven votes. A brief process note, for the benefit of folks in the audience, City Council policy is that a public hearing for planning agenda items occurs at the Planning Commission meeting. According to this policy, the City Council does not typically receive public comments on planning items. And I will go through some slides and information for us. Went way too fast. There's our zoning map and you can see the property outlined in the black with the arrow. Future growth map showing the property is new employment. The CUP itself, DP37. This is the protest map. You can see the area is fairly minor. Some photos looking north towards the site, looking east, south towards the site, and west towards the site. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Questions or discussion for staff? Councilmember Bluebaugh?
Thank you, Mayor. And there's a similar warehouse facility just south of Taff there, right? Isn't it like a U-Haul or something?
I believe there is.
Okay. Do you know how tall that building is? Do you know, the reason I'm asking is because I had a landlord that owns a property adjacent to this and they were questioning, I believe it said an 80-foot height. Is that accurate? And is that really what they expect to build or is that just what we have in the zoning?
That is the information in the report I am looking at, shows building height of 80 feet. Some of these parcels, of course, already exist. There's a combination of one of the smaller part of one of the parcels is going to join and make just one, so that part of one parcel becomes part of another parcel. I do not know if that was actually an increased request or if that is actually what the CUP currently says. My guess is that's current.
Yes, sir, that is currently what's allowed. They've not requested to change that. And at this time, the applicant does not have any proposals of what exactly they would like to build.
But that's consistent with how everyone else is zoned, similar zoning in that area?
I'm not.
I mean, we wouldn't change the, we don't fluctuate the height, do we?
They do sometimes, but I can tell you, I'm not sure about the height limits that are in the area. But what I can say is that this is not a change from the way that this has been zoned for a number of years already.
And on the protest, please tell me what the concerns were again?
The actual protest petition, I don't know what information was cited. However, I believe it was a, as I recall from the meeting, it was a concern about possible crime increase as well as drainage.
Okay, have we had either one of those issues with the U-Haul facility, this catty corner?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I'm not aware of any either. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? There's no further discussion and Chair recognizes Councilmember Bluebaugh as this was adjutant District Four.
Mayor, I'd like to take staff's recommendation to adopt the findings of MAPC and approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll, members cast their vote. I've received 78 votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Public Housing, Section 18 Disposition Application for Group 2A.
Good morning.
Good morning, Housing Authority Board. Today, the item I have for you is our second application to HUD for disposition of public housing, single-family homes. Again, just going over the background for the record, in 2017, the Housing Authority Board approved a rental assistance demonstration application to HUD convert its entire portfolio under two RAD, the Rental Assistance Demonstration Project, as two projects. The multifamily senior project of 226 units and our senior multifamily projects at Greenway Manor, McLean Manor, Rosa Gregg and Bernice Hutcheson, and the 352 scattered single-family homes. The Housing Authority was successful in securing the tax credit investor HUD loan and gap financing for the multifamily housing with a total cost budget of just under $36 million. In October 21, that financing closing construction began. Rosa Gregg, the interior rehab is almost complete, should be complete by the end of the year with exterior upgrades beginning in the spring. McLean Manor, the interior rehabilitation and resident relocations will be completed in the first quarter of '23 with the exterior upgrades beginning at that same time. Bernice Hutcheson Apartments, those interior rehabs begin in January of '23. And Greenway Manor will begin soon as McLean is complete in the spring of '23. We were not successful in securing the financing for the RAD conversion of the 352 single-family homes. In May of '21, HUD convened the National Panel of Repositioning Experts to evaluate our options. And they determined that the RAD rents would not support the debt service needed for the requisite repairs. Tremendous expense of managing and maintaining single-family homes made that RAD conversion infeasible and they recommended disposition. So Group 2A, we're getting a little more complicated in our grouping, consists of 43 clustered single-family homes. In our original plan, we intended to bring in the second application, both pilot areas, one and two, which contained the 43 clustered homes at Minnesota, Ash, Piatt and 25th, as well as the cluster of 23 homes at Haskell and St. Clair. However, the Haskell and St. Clair site has an environmental plume that HUD is requiring additional environmental testing be done. So rather than delay the entire application, we've decided to move forward with the 43 applications while that Phase 2 environmental is being conducted on the Haskell and St. Clair cluster. So this pilot area, again, is located in northeast Wichita, 25th and Minnesota, Ash and Piatt. It is located within a qualified census tract as well as the established central area. And we're recommending disposition under Section 18 of the Housing Act. To be sold at fair market value through a competitive RFP process, conflated with the ability for purchasers to apply for affordable housing funds, for affordable homeownership and/or project-based voucher contracts to ensure affordability. Those affordability restrictions will be in accordance with the Affordable Housing Fund or that project-based voucher contract, obviously. We are requesting tenant protection vouchers for existing residents who do not exercise the right of first refusal to purchase the property they occupy. And the residents are provided relocation counseling and all relocation costs are paid by the project. Here's a map that shows the location of those 43 homes. Again, that's 25th Street to the south, 26th to the north, Minnesota to the west, and Madison to the east. The Housing Authority has completed the activities required by Section 18 of the Housing Act, which includes that environmental assessment, the appraisals, resident consultations, resident relocation counseling, homeownership resource counseling, and local government consultations. The sales proceeds, the current appraised value of all 43 of those homes is $1,912,000. That was conducted by a private appraiser contracted with the real estate office. The proceed, we're going to request from HUD for the proceeds to be used first to pay off the pre-development loan from the failed RAD conversion, with any remaining to seed Section 8 rental projects through the Affordable Housing Fund or any other Section 8 rental project approved by the Housing Authority Board, as HUD will not permit the proceeds to be used for affordable homeownership. There is no impact to the general fund, although WHA will request HUD allow those net sales proceeds over and above the cost to pay off the pre-development loan be used for other Section 8 rental projects. The Law Department has drafted, reviewed, and approved the resolution as to form. And it is recommended that the Housing Authority Board approve the resolution and the submission of the inventory removal application in Section 18 Disposition Addendum to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for 43 single-family homes from the public housing portfolio and authorize the necessary signatures. And I stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Bluebaugh?
Mayor, thank you, Sally. Of the 1.9 million of what we'd expect for these, did we have a lot of studies and stuff like the other ones? So where, you know, where we spent half, half of the equity in the properties in those studies? Did we do that on this one?
Yes, as required, the environmental reviews and as well as the appraisals have already been completed and paid for.
And what's the value of that?
Well, on these 43, that's really challenging to calculate because the first round environmental reviews were done on the entire 352, which was about $600,000 on the entire 352. Then because they were more than a year old, we had to go back and do updated environmental reviews. And that more recent cost was about $20,000 to update those on just these 43.
Okay. I mean, you know, this all sounded like a great program whenever we got into it. And then we exhausted, I mean, would we have had to have done these to sell them regardless?
Yes, absolutely.
So?
No matter what we decided to do.
We didn't essentially waste any money, is that correct?
Well, if we had been able to close the RAD project, we wouldn't have had to have the environmental reviews updated. If we weren't selling them, we wouldn't have to have them appraised. But we would incur, obviously, additional costs, financing costs along the lines of the RAD closing costs.
So the environmental reviews wouldn't have been required?
They would have been required, even if we repaired them and kept them, the environmental reviews would have been required.
Okay, then what, tell me any expense we would have paid that would not have been required if we wouldn't have tried to get into the RAD program?
What expenses we wouldn't have incurred?
I'm trying to make sure that we're efficient.
Yeah, if I could just jump in for a second. We would have been required by HUD to incur those expenses regardless if we wanted to dispose of these properties. So forget RAD, correct? I mean, RAD kind of confuses things, except it slowed us down. What it required us to do is to go back and update environmentals. And that's probably only additional cost, right, Sally, for disposition of these? Since they are, they were federally funded and part of our Public Housing Authority, we can't just throw them on the market and take whatever the market.
The cost for the appraisals are because we're looking to sell them. We wouldn't have had those expenses had we decided we were going to rehabilitate them and try and keep them as public housing. If we could have secured the funds to be able to do that, we still would have had to do the environmental reviews.
Would we have had to do the appraisals as well?
I'm sorry?
Would we have had to have done the appraisals as well?
No.
Okay. Help me better understand Haskell and St. Clair, because those Haskell properties are pretty nice houses and they would be some nice properties to get out there to homeowners.
They are in the area of an environmental plume. So it is still our intention, we will move forward once the Phase 2 or the components of the Phase 2 environmental are complete. are complete.
Can you expand on the environmental plume?
Sure. There's a groundwater contamination plume that affects that area. They are within the area that that affects, and it has been identified in the Phase One environmental. Because of that, HUD is requiring that our environmental contractor go in and do additional vapor testing. Depending on the vapor testing, it could end up doing groundwater or core sample testing.
Okay. How are the homeowners in that area affected?
I'm sure. I can't tell you without knowing what the results of that testing is going to come back. Those plumes, though, are currently being monitored by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. There are known plumes.
Can we get more information about the plume to share with the public?
After we get the Phase Two reports.
Okay. And what's the timeline for that?
So, we're currently having requested the quotes from the environmental consultant so that we can enter into the contract to approve that next phase.
What's the timeline for that?
Well, once they get us those quotes, we'll be working with procurement to enter the contract.
A metric, something measurable?
Two weeks to get to the contract. They get 60 days to complete their work. They know we're wanting it done quicker, but their standard is 60 days.
Okay. And do we have any more definition on the disposal of these properties as far as how we look at, you know, I know you said you can be individually or a package. Is that price per property, or how exactly are we doing that? Because a lot of these, I believe, would be good starter homes for individuals.
They absolutely could. It'll be put out as an RFP. Any individual group could apply for one, two, all of them, whatever they want to do. At that same time, they could request Affordable Housing Funds from the ARPA funds set aside by the council, as well as a project-based voucher. Those proposals will then be reviewed by the Affordable Housing Review Board to make a recommendation to come back to the Housing Authority Board and make recommendations on which proposals to accept.
Sally, did you say last time that you were going to work with the Affordable Housing Review Board to develop the criteria in advance of their review?
Exactly, yes.
I think that's what the council members asked.
That's what I'm wanting, and that's what I'm wanting to share with the public and share with anybody that I want to buy them as a package or buy them individually. And I would hope that one of the criteria would be we would make homeownership a priority on these versus someone coming in here and buying the package.
Sure. Yes. We're still looking for the two more members to that Affordable Housing Review Board.
Okay. Can I get some kind of follow-up whenever they...
Sure.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Sally brought this up, so kind of my questions on the 43. Have we done any survey work to see if anyone had dug a well that didn't report it? And is there any information attached to these about the groundwater and soil contamination in that area?
So, we have received no indication through our environmental assessment on the 43 that there's any contamination for these 43.
Okay. That is in that KDHE site, though?
Not according to our environmental consultant, it's not.
It's like one block over, so it would still potentially be in there. And that might just be something we confirm with KDHER to make sure, but a lot of folks in that area were concerned about that, so I just wanted to make sure if that was any overlap that folks...
Well, and we do know that none of them have built, none of these 43 sites have dug wells on the site.
Okay. That's good. There are some people in the area that had dug wells and didn't get all the permits and kind of finding some of that out, so appreciate that.
Councilmember Hoheisel?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sally, for the presentation, and I will get on that appointment ASAP. You talked, I believe it was maybe slide 105 or 104, but you touched base about tenant protection vouchers. Could you just give me a quick rundown of that? Is this similar to the other housing vouchers, and are people having difficulty finding residences to take those vouchers?
So, it will add to our portfolio the number of vouchers that we have available. It's considered replacement housing, even though we're looking to keep affordability restrictions on these 43 in the future, but it helps those residents that currently reside in units who aren't ready for homeownership. We can issue them a voucher, and then we still have to work with our community and our landlords to try, and our relocation coordinator to try and find them replacement housing where they can use their voucher.
So, relocation coordinator would help them, so we'll make sure that they have housing before they have to leave, essentially?
Correct. We have been in contract with our H. Brown and Associates relocation coordinator since 2018, so all of these families have a great relationship with her.
Okay. Affordability restrictions, could you give me a little bit of background on that as well, please?
Sure. If it's under a project-based voucher contract, if they want to do rentals, it's going to have a project-based voucher contract. So, will all families living in that property for 20 years will have to actually come from the Section eight waiting list and income qualify as well as other eligibility criteria to live in that unit for 20 years. We did just get, finally, we have not received feedback from U.S. Treasury on our questions on the Affordable Housing Fund, but we did get feedback from Whit O'Brien's, who is the city's consultant on all things ARPA. We just got that on Friday. That indicates that even for homeownership, there'll be a 20-year restriction. So, if the family doesn't stay in the unit for 20 years, the funds will have to be repaid. That is going to be a huge barrier to using it for affordable homeownership, but we can still try.
Is there any workaround of that that we're looking at, or...
According to Whit O'Brien's, absolutely not.
That's unfortunate. Do we have, do we have like a special exception for groups who have proven that they are committed to affordable housing? Do we give them any leeway whenever they do come in and put bids on any of these homes?
It wouldn't be leeway because they do have to sell for at least their appraised value. Obviously, that'll be some of the selection criteria on the RFP is the history of the organization that's putting in the request. You know, is it one of our organizations that is typically working in this arena where we have a good history? They're going to obviously score higher on that capacity question on the RFP.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Further questions? See, none. Is there input from the public on this item? See, no. We're bringing discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? All right, I think we've quite a bit of discussion. So, with that, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the resolution and the submission of the inventory removal application and Section eighteen disposition addendum to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD for 43 single-family homes from the public housing portfolio and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. I haven't received seventy-eight votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Clemmons Aviation LLC Supplemental Agreement Number Five, James Jabara Airport.
All right. Morning, Jessie.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers?
Director Romo, I mean. Apologies.
I believe I have a PowerPoint that was submitted. Well, I had a PowerPoint. Evidently, it disappeared somewhere.
Let the record show, this might be the first presentation without a PowerPoint. We trust you can present the item off the cuff.
I will do my best, sir, off the cuff. So, here today, discuss Clemmons Aviation. They have an operation at Jabara Airfield. They approached us with a request to change their operating status to be an FBO, that's fixed-based operator. And so, from that request, it triggered a lot of analysis and action from staff apart. We had Clemmons Aviation submit to us an application for their operation, and there was a lot of due diligence that was performed, looking into their facilities, whether or not they could meet the minimum standards. We have a document called Minimum Standards that needs to be met for operations of that kind. And so, things that are required are space lobby, access for the public, services that are provided, levels of service, and all those things we determined that can be met by their operation. So, the biggest difference right now between their current operation and what they would do as an FBO is they would be able to sell fuel to the public. They already have a fueling operation on field. They do that for their own aircraft, but this would be the main difference, is being able to put themselves out for public sale of fuel. So, with that, I know it's a short presentation, and I assure you, there was only about two slides worth of data that was in them. I captured it all. We would recommend to you that we approve the supplemental agreement for Clemmons Aviation to become a fixed-base operator at Jabara.
Questions for staff? See, none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See, no. We're bringing discussion back to the bench. For the discussion on this item, the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Tuttle.
I just want to thank Jessie, Director Romo. You did a fantastic job off the cuff, so thank you for presenting the information. Also, want to thank all staff, as always, who've been involved in this. Also, want to thank the Clemmons. Thank you for sitting through the meeting, and then also for your investment in Wichita, it's very much appreciated. As this is in my district, it's so exciting to see the development along the web corridor. I was just having a chat with some folks yesterday at WSU Tech, and they said it's great to have some neighbors out that way for the first time in a long time. So, just thank you to the Clemmons for your investment in our great city.
Vice Mayor, if you would like to retain the floor for a motion?
Thank you. I appreciate that very much, and I would enthusiastically move that the Wichita Airport Authority approve the supplemental agreement and authorize the necessary signatures.
I will second that motion. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. I've received seventy-eight votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Appointments and Comments?
All right, let's start off with appointments. Are there appointments at this time? Hoheisel, I think you got shamed for not, you got one? No?
Not right now.
Not right now. If there's no appointments, we're going to get into comments. So, there are comments at this point. We have a couple of things that we've got to go over, and then we are going to do our executive session, so I'm trying to do this as orderly as possible. Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a question for Bob, and I don't know if Tyler actually would answer that too, but since we've read District, when will that update on the website when you type in what Council District? And I'm just asking because I've started to engage a new part of District One, and had one person apply for DAB, it shows up as District Two still. So, will that change, like, next year or...
When it goes into effect, I believe after the first of the year, and that's when we would put it on the website.
Okay. And then, other than that, I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone.
Further discussion. I am going to go ahead and just give an upside from the Oversight Committee for an update. The Oversight Committee, we've tried to compile, there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to some of the stuff that we're addressing. We tried to compile that into one overarching update, but each of these updates go a little deeper. So, if folks are interested in diving into more information, please let us know. But just the first one would be an update with Jensen Hughes. Jensen Hughes sent out a monthly update to the Jensen Hughes Advisory Committee on December 2nd, and the Advisory Committee met with Jensen Hughes Monday, December 19th. That was yesterday. Now, just a reminder, the Advisory Committee is made up of myself, Councilmember Johnson, Pastor Pam Mason, and Jay Fowler, and his staff by Dante Martin. The update consisted of information about surveys and interviews, basically their data collection, and I'll expand on that. The next site visit, they will be physically coming here on January 9th to conduct more interviews and discuss communication between the City Manager's Office, City Legal, and the HR Department. Advisory Committee should expect first draft of a report to be available in February. We will know more about that timeline as they complete their onsite visit. Jensen Hughes has monthly updates that will be published on the city's website and, of course, given by the Oversight Committee. Now, a couple of things that stuck out when we jumped into Jensen Hughes' data collection ability, frankly, what's, there were some really impressive things to point out. One is they were able to, in one-on-one interviews, they've interviewed 56 WPD personnel, and then 33 of those folks are sworn members. So, there's folks who are also just city personnel who are in a supportive role. What's really impressive is the actual, the secure but emailed survey to our members. They've had, or to our, they're called sworn members, but basically are actual WPD personnel. So, out of 628 total staff, because a few of those surveys got kicked back because the emails were incorrect, so give or take a few, but it's 628, 435 folks actually responded to the initial survey that was emailed or the link was emailed, giving it a response rate of 69.26% at this moment. To put that in context, their response rate nationally is usually 5 to 12%. So, this is the highest response rate that they have had of any city our size or equivalent to our size. They said they had one extra response. One city at one point that had a higher response rate, and it's because it was a very small city with a very, you know, limited amount of staff, so it was very easy to get everyone to take the survey. So, basically, they have been able to have almost unprecedented access to our personnel and to gather information for their overarching analysis. They've also began reviewing 10 gigabytes of documents and data, including but not limited to policies, reports, organizational charge, budgets, standing operating procedures, and complaints against department members. So, again, they continue their work. They are coming for a site visit. I do want to remind folks that no one is forced to do an interview. These are only for folks who are interested in doing an interview. These are about one hour long, and they are still able to get 69.26% of folks doing surveys, and then also a large percentage of folks who actually have agreed to sit down for the interview. So, looking forward to that report, that's really good news, that they've been so successful. Also, just an update, just a couple of quick ones. On City Legal, we, a work group requested research into best practices for increasing communication between City Legal and the Mayor and Council. City Legal shared that County Legal meets weekly with commissioners for updates. City Attorney is available to meet with Councilmembers upon request to improve communication and discuss issues that may become before the Council. Councilmembers should contact City Legal if they like to schedule a meeting. So, just a reminder, she's available. And also, we ask that folks, feel free to discuss with us and with City Legal if there's any ideas on how we can get updates from Legal more often. Update from HR. The HR Department is working with the, within the HR Department to coordinate with other departments to get files digitalized. So, basically, one of the complaints that we've heard is the process of if there's a complaint or an issue going from a department over into HR and how we can move forward on, kind of combining those, that information. There has been some mischaracterization because of multiple files. So, myself and Councilmember Hoheisel went to HR to just kind of ask how the process works. And one of the things that we were able to gather is they're starting a digitalization of all employee files, and it is going to be secure, and it's going to allow all information to have a central point. So, that's a really good step forward that I think should alleviate some fears about information getting out, you know, when you have paper files and you're moving them throughout different offices. Of course, there's concern about access. So, this is going, having an update, I think, really helped us out, being able to understand exactly how information is stored within, between departments and HR. And we also got an update from Chief Sullivan. Welcome, Chief, who's with us in the back. He, as folks know, has been making his rounds at the City Hall to meet with folks and to talk with Councilmembers. He's really hit the ground running. He's looking into staffing management as well as professional standards, processes to identify potential improvements. The Oversight Committee is looking forward to updates from the chief, and no, he is waiting on the Jensen Hughes report to review recommendations on some of these issues. Chief Sullivan is on board, of course, or here to answer any questions if there are any questions. So, we do thank the chief for being here. And just a note as well, Jensen Hughes, in their presentation to us yesterday, did make a comment on some of the stuff that they have looked at for potential... a comment on some of the stuff that they have looked at for potential improvements, or thinking about, our chief is already implementing improvements. So it shows that really, the chief's not only hitting the ground running, but he's already addressing concerns that the Jensen Hughes report might be showing as areas to fix. So with that, we do have about three members on the board to ask questions, I guess, of myself or of the chief, who is available. Councilmember Booba.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't realize we had any findings from Jensen Hughes, Bob. Has that been shared with council?
Mayor, Mayor, the, I don't have, I'm not in the process. The Steering Committee is the one that's getting periodic updates from Jensen Hughes.
Yeah, this, this is basically the update for council. If you're interested in getting the handout or any details.
Well, I'm interested in the city manager sharing the same information with the council that the mayor has, is what I'm interested in.
Councilmember, I don't have that information. I'm purposely out of the process so that it stays objective, and there's no allegations that I'm influencing the process one way or the other, so.
The public has a lot of interest in this, and I think as elected officials, we all need to have the information that's coming in as it's coming in.
So just a quick rebuttal. Again, the city manager, part of the reason why we have elected oversight between all the different moving parts, and why we're doing a, basically bi-weekly, sometimes monthly, depending when the information comes in, update, is because folks have pointed fingers at the administration, part of our government, and said that there's question, the trust of the administration. So as the administration now gets information, so do the elected, and we present this publicly so just to hopefully alleviate, I think, some of that concern. So there's questions about why the mayor is getting information about Jensen Hughes, but other folks aren't. Just a reminder, as I mentioned, the committee, Advisory Committee is made up of myself and Councilmember Johnson, as well as Pastor Pam Mason, and Jay Fowler, and staffed by Dante Martin. So we don't have the entire council on that for obvious reasons. It's just like any other board, but we're happy to give out information as freely as possible, and please don't beat up on Bob too much, because this, again, is an initiative that is taken on by the electeds to get information directly to, to the electeds, as well as through the administration. So I just want to put out there, it's not like Bob gave me this information, and he didn't give it to anyone else. This is because we have an Oversight Committee. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I was actually going to bring it back to that and highlight on that call, because I was on the same call, that Jensen Hughes had mentioned that officers and staff have been very candid with them, and they felt like this was going to be a good report with good recommendations. And once they started doing one-on-ones, folks really opened up to him. So looking forward to that next month. And again, as, as the mayor said, it was just a committee update, and the mayor is just sharing that publicly. But it was good information, and it sounds like we have really good participation from all of the folks involved thus far.
Yeah, and I do just want to, and I don't want to get too suggestive with the data, but some of the highlights that were said by their person, who is, they consider the data guru, was not only how open folks were during the conversation, the interview, but also the, the feeling of being a part of, turning the page in something new, something good, as well. It was, in my field, we call it transformational moments, where it didn't seem transactional. It seemed like that the folks, they were honest, they were candid, but they were also very much looking forward to the future of working for the city with their eyes set that we will keep growing and improving our police department. So that was another interesting tidbit. Of course, that data is not official. That was just a reflection on the overarching data that was collected.
And just to highlight real quick, that was in response to my question about, have you received honest feedback on challenges? And their response was, we have, but we've also heard a lot about officers and other staff members talking about opportunity, and this being the chance to turn the page. So as we talked about challenges, they are, but also highlighting they're ready to do better.
Yeah, I walked away feeling very, very proud of our city, just in the participation numbers. I mean, it's unheard of to have about 70%. That's not, that's not even a sample of a population anymore. That's, that's the overwhelming majority of a population. So to have a sample size that big is huge, but also getting little tidbits on some of the stuff that was said, it was a very positive meeting. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd just like to say, we're going to continue to look into these issues and bring the information forward in a timely manner. I believe the meeting with City Legal was last week. The HR meeting was yesterday, so again, we're going to try and bring these forward in a timely manner. I'd also like to say, I appreciate Chief Sullivan, like we've said, hitting the ground running. I would also like to acknowledge that in part, that was also due to Chief Livingston setting the groundwork for, for him to come in and have a lot of these projects and a lot of this information ready to go. So I appreciate everything you've done, sir, and I appreciate everything Chief Sullivan's done so far, and look forward to working with him in the future.
Yeah, good, good tidbit, and I apologize. I think that Chief Livingston, we, as a council, we might not have expressed enough, just, just thanks to Chief Livingston for stepping in and helping out and being a part of the transition team as well. So we appreciate you, and we, of course, appreciate Chief Sullivan as well, and just both of you folks who can't tell, they're both are sitting next to each other in the back, working this together as we transition, so I just really appreciate that. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask if we are still on track with the timeline and when this report is supposed to be finished?
So I'm assuming you're discussing the Jensen Hughes report?
Yes.
Okay. Because technically, there are multiple things here that could lead to a report if needed, but in the context of Jensen Hughes, what the next steps with them are, and this I find interesting, is there will be, and I hesitate to put a date on it, because in government, as soon as you mention it's going to be at this time, that means it's automatically not going to be at that time, and you're going to have to deal with that. So, but I will tell you, the projection is towards the end of January to send the report to the city through Dante Martin, with the idea of, of making sure that all the terminology matches the terminology that we use. So it will be asking for non-substantive, technical amendments. Basically, and I don't understand the lingo like some do, but basically, some, some police department might refer to something as a borough, while other people refer to it as a precinct, or, so it's to make sure that we're using the same language. That document will have all the changes. It will be only set in track changes, which means that any changes to that document or amendments, that will have to be approved by the researcher. So it can't be a substantive change to the document itself, only the technical changes to make the document make more sense to the language that we tend to use. So that will be in January, and then we're told in February, and like, this is where I hesitate to say if it's going to be the beginning of February or the end of February, to have the final document. Now, if this changes, we will report this. So for example, if Jensen Hughes comes back and finds something that they need more time with, then, you know, we'll report that it's going to be, they'll need more time. However, with the data collection being where it's at, I think that some of the concerns that could have slowed this down would have been a lack of participation to collect that data, and it seems like that's not an issue at this point. So I'm very confident that we'll stick to that, that timeframe. And again, once that report is out, the final draft, it will come through the committee, which, which, and also through the administration, and we will release that to the public.
Thank you.
And also make sure that we utilize the policy aspects with the police chief to make any changes that are needed. Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify something from your statement earlier regarding the monthly reports from Jensen Hughes. I look back at the minutes from when we approved the contract. You stated that the council should be getting monthly reviews of the progress with this firm as they conduct their research. You also stated that you believe the city manager will as well. So I'm just asking for clarification. Is your report today that monthly review from Jensen Hughes, or we're going to be getting separate individual reports as councilmembers from Jensen Hughes?
I don't believe Jensen Hughes would be meeting with councilmembers. I could be wrong. I think they're just.
I'm asking for a meeting. I'm asking for monthly review of their report.
So, couple of things here. I have their monthly report, and that's why I'm presenting to you right now, and I can hand it to you. Everyone will get this because it's now a public document, because I'm talking about it publicly. As their letterhead on it, this is their report. The meeting was to dive in a little deeper and get a deeper update of their report for this presentation. That happened yesterday, and the Advisory Committee is, again, made up of only two electeds, a community member, the Chair of our, of our Citizen Review Committee, and then, of course, Dante Martin, who staffs it. So I'm not sure if there was an expectation at Jensen Hughes have one-on-one meetings with everyone monthly, or if, because my interpretation was, the report will come out as a written report, and we could do follow-ups. But yes, you will be getting the written report, just, just like everyone else is.
Thank you.
Of course. And if there are any, and I'm just spitballing here, I don't really have the authority for this, but I doubt I can get, we'll get too much pushback. If there are any members of the council who, as we get, and we should have their report in a couple of months, but if we have other meetings, who would like to sit in on one of those meetings and ask questions, because we only have two electeds on this, there likely a possibility that we could have a third person in there, at least just to observe and gather information without too much problems or issues. So if folks are interested in meeting directly, or at least just being on a Zoom meeting when we have these, the Advisory Committee meets, I'm sure we could work that out. All right. Further questions about this report? Again, we'll be handing it out to everyone. If you have further questions, or if anything else comes our way, we'll report information as we get it. See if I'm missing anything. All right. With that, we do have an executive session request. So I'll move into the city recess and do executive session for 30 minutes to receive information from property management pursuant to KSA 754319B2 for the preliminary discussions of the acquisition of real property. The executive session is required to protect the privacy, to protect the city's right to confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest. So we will begin this at 11:30. That should give people about 10 minutes to not only get to the boardroom, but also to take a quick break, and we will go meet back here in the chamber at 12 o'clock. So that is the motion that we move into executive session from 11:30 to 12 o'clock, in which we'll be meeting back here. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast their vote. All right, so I've received seven votes. We are on break for 10 minutes, and then we're meeting in 11:30 for executive session. Thank you.